I have nothing to add.
For both minutes. Any discussion? Home paper?
I have none, madam chair.
Reports, Union Garden.
Well, pleased to have the Westside Parents Club here this evening. And in the last meeting, you get a firsthand view of the learning projects. So, we have the parents here at the nurse to talk about it. So, Susan, do you have anything as far as introductions or?
Um, these are the, the officers, some of the officers for the Westside Parents Club. And then Amanda O'Brien is the coordinator, the school garden coordinator. I think most of you guys know who's who. And this is Krista Harrington, and she's a board member for Westside Parents Club. And Abby Fannetti, and Brandy Nider. And Adam's our past president, but I don't know if they're making, hold some kind of office.
Vice.
Yeah, he's kind of, definitely, yeah.
Well, thank you for having us. I don't know, should we, do we need to stand up? We have just been really excited with this garden project and the greenhouse rising. That we wanted to come and share our excitement, kind of give you our perspective from our eyes. And see if you guys had any questions for us as we go on in the future. Gosh, you might have to help me with the names. We started, because we were talking about a garden two years ago.
Last, yeah, fall of 2015?
Oh, yeah. And it certainly had a great half. The kids, I, I think the biggest impact for me is seeing the kids and their excitement. The teachers out there have all done a good job bringing the garden into the classroom. From soil to the insects to the vegetation that's been in the classroom. Even just the starts and developing it as much as possible. What else can we think about?
They've really learned a lot about insect life cycles, having ladybugs hatching in their classroom and releasing them, same with the butterflies, you know, they bring butterflies in all three classrooms. So, they've learned a lot about the animal life cycle, formation, and ecosystems. It's been really small and promising.
And they are invested into it too with their, you know, elbow grease. They're out there pulling weeds and we're out there watering right now as families. Brandy, you had a cute story about.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I shared before we came, I thought, you know what was really neat about it? And as a teacher and parent, you know that when someone owns a project, they, they do more for it. They will invest in it. And when I had to do the watering on Friday, I was signed up for Good Friday. My daughter Haley was just like, this is, oh, when I showed up, I was, she acted as if this was her garden. And I was there and doing the watering. She gave me instructions, so she was pulling the weeds. And she was owning this garden. And I thought, this is incredible. Because I wasn't able to make some of the, the work parties and whatnot. So, I hadn't been down there a lot. But when I went down there and I saw how much, both my kids were involved with this, I thought, this is great. This is, this is what we want our kids to, to be part of. And so, I, I really, I think, she's not the only one. I think a lot of the kids are at that point owning it.
Yes, I'm in trouble at my house because I, I didn't sign up until a later weekend of summer. So, we're not out there until the end of next month and then when in August.
So, I just have an impression you're saying signing up. So, is every family doing a sign up or is it gonna be watered like that continuously or?
So, we have.
It sounds like a good experience, but I'm curious.
So, we have a site that we put out with Google Docs for all the parents to sign up for. To come, like, one person to come out midweek and one person to come out in the weekend. With, because with the drip irrigation, it'll pretty much be taken care of. But we, it still needs to be checked on, maybe, you know, heavy watering or, you know, whatever needs to be done. However, not all of the irrigation equipment is in yet. So, we have it all laid out, we just can't hook it up to the faucets. And until that comes in, we have to water every single day otherwise, especially in this heat, or we lose all the plants of those kids, it's so hard work. So, when we realized that the irrigation equipment wasn't going to come in, we put some, we sent out a text and we sent out a post on our Westside Parents Club Facebook page. And we did it for last week and for this week. And both times, within an hour, we were literally turning parents away, saying, thank you. They have, all the slots have been filled.
And then we also have weekly parents signing up to go market if they're not doing week or weekend checks. So, there's, there's a, there's a lot of involvement to carry through that summer.
So, do we have plants growing ready then?
We do, um, in the garden and out, in the greenhouse.
Yeah, we've got, we've got stuff in the greenhouse. They've got all, brassicas going, planted radishes and carrots. They've got strawberries and raspberries. They've got lettuces growing, sweet potatoes, which out here will grow very well in the greenhouse.
You named it, it's right.
They have stuff out there that you would not think to put in a greenhouse, but they put it in.
Pomegranate.
And, yes, they got pomegranate. We have artichoke weed growing. Yeah, they, what we did was we had the kids say, what do you want in your garden? We made a list, I think I showed you that last time we were here. And so, we have tried to, through the grant budget, buy as much of those plants as we could.
If they were interested.
That they were interested in. And then out in the pumpkin patch, we have pumpkins planted, some watermelons, a couple cucumbers and some squash. And then the entire perimeter is planted in sunflowers. And we're gonna do, for the outdoor garden area, because again, it's not fully developed. What, we've had a lot of dirt and compost donated, purchased some, some topsoil fruit that we have leftover from the greenhouse garden beds. And we're going to put a short season corn maze in there so that the kids can enjoy it and can use it at the fall carnival.
How short is short? Because that would seem to me to be very short.
Supposedly, this corn is ready in 62 days.
Do you guys have anything ready at this time?
We've sold, we've, we've thirled almost a hundred dollars of the last year's farmers markets. So, we've been selling. Ninety-one, the first one, ninety-seven, the second?
Ninety-seven, the first week, and ninety-one, the second week. And selling leftover plant starts, stuff we did not have room to put in. We do have stuff already starting to produce fruit. We've got strawberries, I saw today, starting to turn red. Not a lot, but some. And then one of our tomato plants is loaded up with fruit already, it's all in there this way around. And then our tomatillos, we have purple tomatillos, and they're loaded with fruit too. So, then a couple weeks, we'll have stuff that can be planted out in that garden.
And the kids have, they've eaten some.
They have, they've done tastings. They've, Rochelle, right?
They've done tastings with Rochelle. And Jessica has used stuff out of the garden in, in the lunch. She made green beans one day for everybody. She made zucchini bread out of this massive zucchini that was out there. They made, they had pizza on the lunch menu one day, so she took basil out of the garden and made margarita pizzas. She, you know, whenever anything's available, she used it. The kids, right before the frost was coming, the kids went and picked every single tomato off of the vines. And she went, she ripened them in the basement, and they were able to eat some of the tomatoes in the winter.
They're really learning a lot. They're getting excited about it.
And like the vegetables.
And, because they grew up themselves. Right, right. Makes a difference.
Just, I guess, more detailed stuff. We, I do have the first few pages of our action plan. The school garden committee, not with us together. We've finished, you know, to help with the district's most of the.
Eight.
Seven out of the nine goals for the year, 100%, completed. Two of them are about 75 to 80%. We need to finish the fence and we can't finish part of the, the learning, the learning classroom because the, the board material that came was incorrect. And so, we had to swivel some stuff around. But almost all of our goals for, for the year have been completed. And then we have new goals for next year.
Do you guys have something about the drip line? Is that an ordered item that's coming through then?
It is.
To help finish the drip system so you're not watering every day?
Right, it is. And we, we got an email from Susan this morning that some of it was delivered, but they had to wait for some parts to come. But, but I went out there today to see if there was enough for me to jerry rig it together. And I couldn't find the parts, so I don't know if they're left in the maintenance shed or what. But, um, so right now, we're still every day watering. But we have all the stuff for the drip irrigation, so it'll be fully automated.
Hoping only one more week. Especially it's hot at this thing. It'll be like 90 degree weather. No, no.
So, we know all of you have a great passion for the greenhouse. And we got a good view of it, all of us, we got to walk through it, looks great. Obviously, there was a couple cryptic posts, I don't know.
I, I saw, I saw lots of eyes out there. I won't mention them all.
Yeah, we won't, yeah, we won't say who helped with the.
So, eventually, all your kids will be moving to town. I see you kind of have a plan for the future for months of what needs to be done. Is this, do you feel this is sustainable beyond this core of parents? Or how do you see the future?
I think there's a few ways, or a few answers that come into play there. First is the school and teachers. We've talked a bit in our meetings about the curriculum, excuse me, that will include the garden. And it's a science, math, and health process. So, hopefully, that will be worked into the curriculum and not addition to.
Which is the plan.
Which is what we've talked about.
This is a teacher tool.
Um, we've had a, definitely a steady implant of parent involvement in the past few years. We've done, you know, a few different things since we've been out there. One was a back-to-school barbecue night that we did this past year that was very successful. Have new parent members because of that. We're planning another one this coming year. The community support out there is amazing. We were looking at our numbers for the carnival that we had. And we had 20 to 30% less donations, less people come, and yet we've made the same amount. Which, I just says a lot for the community out there and the support.
Kind of lost track, how much did the carnival cost?
Oh, gosh. It was very generous.
I know.
I, I, I can give you a figure off the top of my head, Will.
It was over double of our annual offering.
Really?
It, it was.
And it's been that way for three years?
It's gonna help continue to finish that library off that now is beautiful and has a great system, but still needs lots of books. And, and so, it was. And, and it's just phenomenal to look at and know what the community does out there still. And, and the people that continue to come and buy who have no vested interest anymore. They don't have crankheads out there, they don't have crankheads out there. And to, to know that that carnival's been going on since before the early 70s, from who I can talk to and that can remember. And so, Barry, just to answer your question, we don't have a crystal ball, but I can say that there's at least three or four of us sitting here that have kids out there for another six years. Fair minimum. You know, we had 17 to 20 parents along with kids show up for the last two work parties and work six to eight hours. Kids as hard as the parents. I mean, it's, we're very blessed in that our parent club is so vested in our kids and are so passionate about bringing education to our kids that goes beyond this core that, that the government is now saying, this is all we want, your kids. You know, this is, this is what you have to provide. We don't care about the daily skills, the, you know, those extra things like the sciences. And so, we're passionate about bringing those things to them. And, and the garden's one way to be able to do that, to, to add that into the curriculum, to, you know, not make more work for the teachers, but give them a tool to, to be able to teach scientists, to, to be able to teach perimeter and area math when they're in that. And so, so we are vested, and it's not just the four or five of us sitting here that are vested. I mean, you know, to have 17 to 18 parents and grandparents show up. We have grandparents and parents donating professional time to put electrical in, as well as, you know, probably $4,000 worth of, of dirt that was delivered by, by people on the Westside that aren't vested out there, or corn, or, you know, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but, but for the next five to 10 years, I mean, we're vested. And, and our goal is, is that the longer we get into it, the easier it becomes because it becomes daily routine. We don't have those. The culture, and we know what to expect and, you know.
The other thing we've done at our last meeting is we created a line item in our budget that absolutely every penny made and earned at the farmer's market will go towards the garden.
Anything else we do out there?
Right, the, um, the program, um, you know, we still have to have a discussion about maintenance and facilities, excuse me, that's in there, you know, that we will contribute some to the, the maintenance costs of it. So, we haven't lined that up yet. We will later this summer with the district, some expectations. That's built into our budget. And to have, you know, $200 in the first two weeks of farmer's market, I think is pretty good.
Do the kids go and sell and get the money?
I think it's more for, for the parents, simply because we're, you're letting them do it all, you know. It, it was, and, and that was Ms. Poole's, and, and, you know, answer. When she brought the change bag to me was, you know, I had to count it three times because, you know, the kids were doing it all, they were doing the net math, and they were doing the money. And it's really hard to keep track of everything when you've got three kids helping. But, you know, that's a huge life skill too, to be able to deal with money and hand money back. And, and so, it's, it's exciting. And they want to go work at the farmer's market. You know, I think Adam's kid worked, Adam's kid worked the first one, right? All they, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's good for them to, to be able to look at how to.
I would be a lifelong customer if they would count my money back to me.
Well, and that's actually one of the things we were.
It's a life hill.
And so, when customers would come up, so. The kids set the prices, which was entertaining.
And they can haggle.
Yes, and they, and they are master hagglers. I mean, they got, they got prices for those plants I could never get for a plant. And I sell them. But they, but on top of that, when somebody would come up and say, what, what are you guys selling? They would tell them, this is a milkweed, and the monarch butterflies eat this, and they ha, they lay their caterpillar eggs on it.
And who can sell weeds? Our kids can sell weeds.
I mean, they were selling all this, and they would tell them, exactly, this is a spider plant we grew in our classroom. You can't kill it. And, you know, they were just. Yes, they had some. But then, they would tell the people exactly how much it was. They would give them, you know, a $10 bill for a $3 thing. And they would actually do it and count the money back, and they did really good. And we had a kindergarten doing that one day. So.
I mean, there's nothing like hands-on learning. Do you want to read about the details of that experience? Good luck with that.
Yeah.
But, hands-on.
Well, and there's nothing that teaches ownership or accountability or responsibility the way something hands-on is that, you know, that they can get their hands dirty with. And, and that's what we're seeing with the passion that, that's coming home, you know, after school when they've done something in the garden or when they've gone out and watered. It is empowerment, it really is.
And it, it does give them that sense of ownership. It's the, you know, the end of, you know, we, we started this as a seed and now we're passing it off. You know, it's the complete.
Yeah, or, or food, or lunch.
Did that answer your question, Barry?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, obviously, there's a lot of passion there. There must have been an earthquake out there.
Didn't you have a shovel too?
I'm throwing it under the bus here.
I think I recall somebody saying, oh, we can eyeball it, we don't need a level. I'm, I'm also gonna pass this around when we're talking about ownership and the pride that the kids have. We had, and I didn't think about it until I was halfway through stuffing these with envelopes, into envelopes. We had the kids write thank you letters to all of the people who have donated, whether it was time or materials, and what that meant to them. So, I'll pass that around so that if anybody wants to see any of them. And they're, they're pretty entertaining, to say the least. The, the correlation that some of the kids made was really interesting from, you know, the one that just sticks in my mind that I tell everybody about is somebody donated the wire for the potato towers. And said, thank you so much for the wire for the potato towers. We're gonna grow pumpkin, or we're gonna make pumpkin pies in our cafeteria. But, but, you know.
Give me a minute.
But then there's other kids that are really understanding, you know. Somebody donated over $400 worth of wire for the fencing. And he, and this kid wrote, thank you. It's going to save us a lot of money so we can use it in our greenhouse, and it keeps the cows out. So, you know, they're, they're getting it. But it's also, you know, it helps with their English and, you know, it's another way it's being incorporated into their learning. You know, they do do potato and, or french fries and ketchup plants. Where they graft a tomato plant on top of a potato plant. Because they're above members of the nightshade family, so they can graft them and then.
Get ketchup in there.
The grant piece of this is concluded as far as the monetary piece, but we're really excited to kind of see where the maintenance goes when we're not doing construction the whole time and, and trying to, you know, have these ladies and their families working hard. And Adam and his family working hard out there, just get to do the fun part with the planting and the harvesting. And so, we'll be ready to do less construction, less paperwork, and more fun stuff with the kids.
It's a huge undertaking.
And I think it, what I thought was pretty neat was this binder, the action plan, the garden committee and Ms. Warner, you guys met throughout the year. I was not part of the garden committee. But when I saw this, I thought, wow, this is great. This is the action plan. It's the, it's part of what you see in front of you as far as submission statement, the to-dos, where we're at, where our goals are. When I saw that, I thought, this is great because for years on, we can always go back, where, where, what is the goal? What are the things that we have done? What is things that we need for the future? So, that when we do have new parents that come in, they can be on the same page as us, and it can continue. It's not just a whim, throw this up, and then hopefully it makes it. It's, it's well-planned.
As far as an action plan and the grants, or all the, I mean, are there expectations in here too? As far as the grant goes?
Yes, and that is in that action plan that we gave you. As far as the grant goes, no, the grant is completed and done.
Do you mean like sustainability or do you mean any?
Uh, do you have to, yeah, I mean, how much do you incorporate in your classroom activities pertaining to the greenhouse? Are there any criteria that the grant stipulates?
There's a mission in there that, that talks about that it's gonna be incorporated into the curriculum, but it's not gonna add curriculum, but that, that it's gonna incorporate into the curriculum. And in my understanding of the hospital, I think the CHIP program has a, has applied for a grant that if they were to get that, there will be some school garden curriculum in there that they, that we will be able to use.
Definitely another shell.
Right. And there's a lot of free stuff online.
No, it's, it's binder, right? It's a binder.
It, it's like curriculum.
There will be another food course service personnel next year, but that is separate from the curriculum. So.
Sorry, I'm taking. No, go ahead.
Um, so, there, there's a couple of curriculum things out there. The first is, we thought, first off, why are we gonna spend money on curriculum when there is so much free curriculum out there on the internet? And then we started looking and said, wow, there's a lot. This is gonna take us hours upon hours upon hours. And the hospital informed us that they applied for a grant. And part of that grant would include a Green Art Planet, which is a program out of Reno, which is a school garden curriculum that they were purchasing. It's a $300 curriculum. And it would be available for any school in the county. So, that was really good. But we don't know yet whether or not they have received that grant. So, we were also looking at possibly if we've had extra funds, purchasing one. But we found instead two different extension offices. One is, I believe, the University of Georgia Extension Office, and then I can't remember the other one, that have very, very comprehensive free curriculums already put together. And they are segregated by grade level and subject matter. So, and they will have lesson plans, activities, directions, everything for the grades and the subjects. So, that is what we looked at and decided was probably going to be the best option. The teachers looked at them as, you know, best they could in a short period of time because again, it's a lot of material. And I, I went and found the material for them, and then they looked and said, yes, we want these ones. And so, that is what they decided would be their best options to go with.
And that curriculum comes alongside the things that they're already required to do?
It goes, yes.
I know that you mentioned that this is not in addition to.
Right.
But it is. You have to, you're giving, you're asking them to do these things, and they're all fabulous things, but it takes extra time for that teacher to integrate that into what they already have and then make sure that what they're doing is gonna satisfy what the state requires them to do. And it is a lot of work.
So, we made sure that any curriculum we worked at, looked at, met, met like the STEM stuff and, you know, all this core.
And the garden committee is the one that looked at this and decided. And the garden committee was made up of all of the teachers, district administration, and our garden coordinator. And so, really, it was the teachers that didn't have buy-in so much, but had the voice of, this is how much we want to do, or this isn't, we can't do more than this. Or, you know, so this was really, the curriculum, correct me if I'm wrong, was really driven by what they felt they wanted or were able to do.
Right, but they told me, they said, we need it to meet these parameters. And so, then I went and searched for different curriculums that met those parameters.
And maybe just to clarify, Stephanie, there's, there's kind of two ways you go with these types of schools, right? One is a charter school where the garden drives the curriculum and you figure out ways for the, those subject areas all to be met within the garden, the scope of that. And we chose not to do that. You're right, because this is in addition to, because we don't have thousands and thousands of dollars to make sure that everything that we do with the garden also meets all of our core curriculum. So, this is in addition to, but those teachers are gonna pick and choose what health assignment, what science assignment, what writing assignment they can pull from these binders.
So, they can do as much as they want.
As much as they want or as little as they want. That's just totally up to them. But, but it is not moving towards a charter-type situation where we would, or magnet-type situation where we would be the garden school and, and stem everything up on that. I don't know if that helps you or not.
Oh, yeah, yes, that's. And I think, I think that's what Barry was alluding to.
And that's why we keep pushing, it's not in addition to, because that's the way the teachers usually explained it to us in parent club meetings. This isn't in addition to. This is working into it, and they've hammered those words into our heads too. And they're, they're, they're very clear about that.
It was a collaboration.
Right.
And we found this looking.
Right.
Well, and it will continue to be. I mean, I don't think anyone here thinks we'll be, we have to be growing kiwi's for years. I mean, if, if that doesn't work, you know, let's try it for this year.
And if things don't get planned or done in classroom curriculum, you know, then those are work pretty days where we bring the kids on weekends and plant those things so that they can be sold at, you know, market to help sustain things, you know.
And our role is to support the teachers and, and educating those students. So, whatever direction that goes in the next few years with this, that's what our role is.
It's still very new.
Yeah, it is.
And that's just it. And it's, they're, they're learning like. And that's just it. And it's, they're, they're learning like we are, you know. And it's, as we said, it's a tool, so we will have it, you know, part of my role as the garden coordinator is to have it all set up. They are ready for them to go in whatever way they need it. So, you know, and they, and they need, and, you know, it's just like your class, you know, a classroom. When you first come in, your first year of teaching, you're not gonna know how to utilize 100% of your classroom. It's gonna take you a few years to learn, you know, that, okay, the teaching board works better over here than over here. So, there, there's gonna be that learning curve, but the goal is to just have it there for them and as things need to be changed, we'll change it and, you know, that's kind of my role is just to make, is also, and also my experience horticultural wise, I have very little experience teaching other than my own kids, but I can say, "Yes, this will work to grow this or this won't." But I can set stuff up and I can do all that and just, so.
It happens.
Yeah, which we're very fortunate to have Amanda because she has the know-how when it comes to gardening. I mean, doing this project without her know, knowing, I mean, I've been gardening for seven years now and I'm still trying to figure things out just myself, but having, I wish I would've had her with my own garden because this is huge. This is a big greenhouse, a big garden.
Very big.
And not to have somebody that doesn't have any experience, this would just, ah, it would go under. So, we, we appreciate her.
No, we appreciate the whole. I, I do agree. I, I think this is a great way to teach. It is, it's hard. We have to, so yes, my questions, I didn't wanna have interpreted as a wet blanket at all. I just. And I feel that teachers that here, enthusiastic parents that go out and raise money very well can be intimidating.
And honestly, our whole goal is always, and we're constantly reminding ourselves of, you know, our goal is to support our teachers and give them the tools to give our kids the best education they have. And that's our total goal is, you know, that's always our question, "What do you want? What do you guys need?" Okay, well then that's, that's where we go next.
Funding and help. So, I mean, that's right there, shows me the huge circle. My sister taught that.
A bit familiar.
Parent of stories.
We hope we're not that parent. It's hard not to be.
You know, and just as kind of a small example of what you're saying of, you know, being very enthusiastic and, you know, that can be intimidating, like it's just a small example. We have a rather large seed bank acquired. We purchased some seeds that we knew would grow well in this area. But we have had donations from seed companies that would just blow your mind. We have probably good 200 different varieties of seeds. So, I went and I organized when you would plant what and, you know, when things would be harvested. And then the teachers went and said, "Well, I want this. I want that." And the other stuff is just sitting, you know, gonna sit in the seed bank until they decide they wanna plant it. So, it's literally there for them to pick and choose what, you know, you know, here's what you have available. What do you wanna do? So, it's not, you have to do all of this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have any other questions?
Did you guys give what you wanted to present us tonight?
Well, thank you for having us.
I don't want to prod you. Thank you, sure, for what you've done to make this happen and get it off the ground and, and I see it's a nice thing and good job.
It was great seeing it last week.
That's what we're being.
Couple weeks ago, yeah.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks, Abby.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, have a good night.
You guys too. See you later.
All right, so, I haven't been able to have finance meetings given my schedule's been so erratic. So, I just decided to, boys, I'm just presenting to you as is. It's been a little hectic for me as well as. The last time we looked at this is in March, so we're looking at April and May. Your revenue for April was 382,000, which was less than what we projected, 572,000. Some of that is tuition. I was expecting some tuition payments, but they didn't get here till just today. And a little less on the taxes, which is a variable sometimes, so not too concerned there. In May, we ended up receiving 421,724 and picked back up and gained a little bit more than what we had anticipated. So, in June, I, I don't even know where I'm at right at the moment. In June, I've got a lot of bills out. ESD and I, we have to do a lot of squaring at the end of June. So, in the next three or four days, we do a lot of back and forth getting squared. And so, right now, I can't give you an accurate number on what that's gonna be. Moving to the next page is your expenditures. April, we spent less than what we anticipated. Anticipated 680,000, we spent 593,000. And in May, we anticipated 609,000. We actually spent 597,000. As of right now, we've got all the payrolls run. And I'm gonna have some checks to probably be cut on those days to finish off some of the bills that need to be paid in the month of June for year end. We won't be at 524,000 on projected AP. I'm only at 110,000 right now, so I know I don't have another 400,000 to build up. So, that'll be actually a good thing. Projected payroll is pretty darn close when I looked at it this afternoon. It'll be about 1, 1.1, 1.2 on, on the payroll. So, ending fund balance, we projected 920,000. Right now, it looks like it's gonna be about 906,000. I actually may end at a million by the time I get squared up with the ESD. And that's basically the long and the short of it. Pretty tight year. And going forward, I have nothing going forward for the new year since they haven't done anything up north. Any questions?
What do you mean?
I don't have a budget.
Sorry. Meaning there's absolutely nothing else.
We're fighting. Any other questions for Janet? Okay, thank you. Olden. Mr. Cahill, do we have any quick business?
Oh, ma'am, we don't.
New business, 2017, 18 student, Grant Kimbrough.
This is just here for a first reading and so we'll go through it and then I'll answer the questions. Just stop me anytime. On the, on page one, the only change to the welcome back letter are dates. And then to the right, information in small bits, there's two changes to that. It used to say about halfway down, fire drills will be held once each school month. And we changed that to safety drills to include our hostile safety drills. And then at the bottom, Hay and Union now have the same phone number with the phone system because the Hay, Union's phones ring into Hay, so we just cleaned that up a little bit. And then pages two and three are just school supplies that have had some updates. So, if we go to page seven, I'd like you guys to kind of look over that and see if you have any questions. First grade might be a little questionable in that we're gonna have three teachers part of the day because we have such a large kindergarten class going up. We've talked about that a little bit. So, we're gonna split Teresa Shine between first grade and title. It'll reduce our title services somewhat, but she's gonna teach reading and math in those first grade classrooms. We have our new hires on there and still doing some hiring. And we can get those on there the first part of August when we get that, when we, yeah. Any questions about that? All the board members look right to you? Page nine. Yeah, I just wanna make sure. Okay. Uh, page nine, this page looks different, but we just restructured it so it was a little more readable. There's nothing new on there. Page 11, we just added the phone number under telephone use at the bottom. We just added that extra phone number on there. And then, there's nothing on page 13 that is new. Page 15, I need you to kind of read through those recess guidelines and the inclement weather. We had enough inclement weather this year. The staff and I felt like we needed to set some guidelines for extreme temperatures because we had those kids inside well over a month worth of recesses on different days because we set, kind of set the guideline that if it was 20 degrees or colder, we were gonna bring them in. And we had wind chills that were pretty extreme this year. But we had parents calling both ways, "Why aren't you sending the kids out and why are you not keeping them in?" So, I did some research in some places like Minnesota and, you know, not Palm Springs, but some places that would be comparable. And we came up with a set of guidelines for our staff handbook and for our parents that, and, and those are listed on there. And we have the NOAA website that is the consistent website that we're gonna use to make those determinations in the mornings, especially for that first recess. And we did have kids standing out at the bus stops and our bus drivers really did a great job running around. If we had a bus that came in, Janet would send them right back out to pick up kids at stops during those 10-degree weather days, zero-degree weather days, so that those kids were not at those bus stops because we really did have kids standing out there for 25, 30 minutes at zero degrees at different times. Questions on the recess guidelines and the inclement weather? Patrick?
Sure. I think I was reading something when you were saying something. What were you saying about kindergarten teachers or how, what are you doing to work, to help out with the incoming?
The incoming, the incoming kindergarten class into first grade is almost, is 60 kids. So, we're going to split those in, in three groups for part of the day. We've done that before. So, reading and math instruction will be given by Ms. McNeely, Ms. Hicks and, and Ms. Shine. And then Ms. Shine will go back to Title I interventions in the afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving on. There isn't anything on page 17. We just moved that disclosure to a different spot is all. 19, we, we thought that we had attendance and medication and health excuses. We just did some cutting and pasting and moved some things around. And so, the, the format of the information is all the same. We just moved some things around that we thought would flow better. Page 21 is our next update that has much in it. On playground safety, student arrival and departure times, we just made them consistent. They've been inconsistent by about 15 or 20 minutes. At different times, we have buses dumping our kids at 7:30 depending on route times. And we're going to shift some supervision to 7:30. We've always said we didn't have supervision until 7:45 and we feel like there's a need for that. So, we're gonna shift some of our assistance to 7:30 start times versus 7:45. And then we have an ongoing issue with students. At 2:30, our fourth, fifth and sixth grade kids walk up to the middle school and they get into mischief up there a little bit. They kind of hang out at DMS out in front and then they get on those buses up there at 3 o'clock. So, we have a half hour of unsupervised time and we're really trying to cut down on that. There's just a handful of kids that actually need to go to DMS because their parents work up there and they need to have written permission to do that. But the rest of these guys need to either walk home or load a bus at Hay play, or at Hay School, Fremont School because we're liable for them getting home. So, we just kind of folded that and tightened that up a little bit, but I'm happy to answer questions about it. I see we need a colon in the very first sentence. And then down at the bottom, it says, "We need your help." It's for our voluntary traffic flow. And it's just in bold to try and remind parents that they need to go one way around there because it is voluntary.
So, your morning supervision at Fremont Hay starts at 7:30 and at Union is at 7:15?
It's technically at 7:00 when that bus comes in, because we receive kids at 7:00.
At Union?
It's always been 7:45 in town and so those kids float if they show up. But our buses are coming in just a little bit earlier and so we're gonna take care of that. And we just have kids showing up, even, even though we post it and post it, you know, it's a problem. So. The trade-off is we probably won't offer home up club at the other end. So, but we need to, we have quite a few kids there pretty early, so. There is anything else on page 21? Do you guys have any questions on that? Okay. The next page, up at the top, there's just after-school procedures. It's just kind of reiterating. Sending notes for normal procedures after school. That language is all the same. And then I just wanted again on here that students are not allowed to get on those buses at DMS and LHS so that we could get it taken care of. And that's all on that page. 25. We had some issues. I felt like some of our Razorback tank tops were too revealing. And so, I put that in there for the dress code to go along with spaghetti straps. We just had the girls put sweatshirts on. I didn't send anybody home this year because I didn't have any policy really to back it up, but I would like your approval to, to take the Razorback tank tops out. And then page 20.
There'll be a fashion show later to help you out.
Yeah, the cut, the ones that cut in in the back. Page 27. The classroom placement, there's never been any policy. It's just been a past practice for teacher requests in this district. I've talked to you guys a little bit about this before. And so, that, that's the, the information that's been posted on the website. That's the information that went out to all the parents at spring conferences as well. I hope so. It's been a difficult, it's been a difficult pill for some folks to swallow. And it's not that I, you know, we won't do teacher requests. It's just that we'd like to do it in August when we're forming those classes. And we like some real solid reasons academically why or behaviorally. And then year-end awards, the criteria have changed just a little bit in that we can set a lot of our criteria and I changed the way it was formatted because it was really difficult for parents to read and understand. So, the difference is for the Presidential Academic Award, you need to qualify for two of those. And we've, we've never had smarter balance testing in there, so we put smarter balance testing in there as a way for a kiddo to qualify. And we took out the fourth grade year. It used to be fourth and fifth grade year, but we looked at the guidelines and it can be just one-year eligibility because that requires our teachers to go back and dig through all, all the report cards from fourth grade and calculate GPAs because our LBL system doesn't calculate that GPA for elementary kids. And so, we wanted it to be a little bit simpler for our teachers at the end of the year when it's chaotic anyway. And then silver, they can qualify for it, two of the criteria. And then the citizenship award stayed the same. And I just made it a little, it wasn't a paragraph form and we just cleaned that up a little bit. And, and just as a heads up, I think they're doing away with the Presidential Fitness Awards. They're, that's why they're not on here anymore. And Mr. Lam is researching it, but we don't know that we'll have them at the elementary level anymore. It is. He's gonna keep testing them in areas and he may change those areas that he gives awards for up a little bit. I know he'll keep sit and reach because it always gets me out. But he, he, the kids depend on it. They love it. And it, and it's a good motivator for those kids to participate. But we were, we couldn't, we had a real difficult time finding awards for it this year and the t-shirts and all that and stuff. Questions on page 27, so we can go on moving? Page 29, the change there has to do with sixth grade eligibility. We, we added a sentence there that says at the very end, "Behavior issues resulting in disciplinary referrals may result in disqualification." Because we've, we've never had, uh, we've had meetings with parents over behavioral issues, but it was a little, I'd like something in the handbook so that they understand that. We've made all kinds of different accommodations where parents traveled with us if we had a behavioral issue. We're still willing to do all of that. I just would like parents to know upfront that if we have continued disciplinary referrals, we're gonna have a meeting. We're gonna talk about the best way for this kiddo to be successful on this trip, so.
It would be a plan spelled out in advance, right? Sorry, it's not going. Right, it would be a.
So, like this year, how many people, how many kids would that affect in general speaking?
Behavioral issues?
Or two of us?
We had about six or seven two weeks before.
I think they did?
They did. Because the teachers accepted their grades right up until, and they worked with them, those teachers worked with them. I babysat kids that needed to get work turned in to, and maybe, you know, we're not sending quite the right message in that you could pull it out at the end no matter what. But it's such a, an eye-opening trip, we don't want anybody to be excluded. We just want them to know that they have got to be safe, they've got to listen to directions. Because if we have a kiddo that won't stop when we're at the beach or listen, creates some big problems for us, so. And that, those are the only changes that I had.
Some of those kids, I mean, that's the one only time they'll visit some of those kids, so.
We want everybody to go, it's very rare that we don't take someone, but we have in the past. Questions that I can answer or concerns that you might have?
Does this offer hard copy?
We're going to, even though we're registering online, we're going to offer this hard copy to our parents.
Is it offered any other way?
English and Spanish. We don't offer electronically at this time, we can this year because we're doing all of our registration documents electronically. But we like to give it out hard copy, so they have it for later on as a reference. With the phone numbers and the teachers and who to call and all that and stuff, and the calendar.
So parents are not required to go at registration through the school this year?
Well, if...
Like in the mass herds or we?
We have a registration week, just like we normally do, and the labs will be open for you to register there, and that's what we would recommend. But you can do it online.
I had a question about the school supply list, stems from my experience last year. Do we share the school supply list with the local businesses?
They're at Walmart and Howard's and...
I just think like, when I was looking for a three-inch binder, I could find twos and fours, and I finally had to order them online.
By one each?
Yeah, average it out. It's hands-on math, you know, it's good stuff.
But it just made me wonder, you know, why do we have twos and fours and more than threes?
That's the only reason, the only way I ever got my kids is they always had at Walmart.
Everybody got there before you bought them, is what happened.
At Walmart, that's the only way to get them.
They're on, we can put them online too, they generally are. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We'll bring the staff one back to obvious to you.
Thank you. Okay, special education transition.
Well, Mrs. Shemaz is not here, so I will present it. When we had Brad Lindhur from ODE, he was the special education specialist. And then review our policies, review our planning course statements. And the one thing that he found absent from our planning course statements is a planned course statement who are to be special education student transition. And when I say transition, I'm talking about moving students. And here's, here's the course goals, which spell it out quite nicely. Transition students that help move from school to work. Support goals from the students' individual IEP. Support the students in developing independent living and employment skills. Travel ability, transportation ability skills, social communication ability, living and life skills. Self-determination, self-advocacy. Leisure and recreation skills, transition skills, friendships with same-age peers and work with adult service agencies. So long the short of it is, it is a planned course statement that we have missing from our books, that needs to be on our books in relation to transitioning special education students to life skill experiences. Pretty self-explanatory, so. Questions? It's kind of a housekeeping chore, so.
Building?
Yes, this will go on the books and review high school and plan course statements.
But do we have a classroom or?
Well, it's a part of our IEP and the staff, basically, education assistants. Where the teachers work with the students in developing those skills. Mr. Hicks this year did a lot of that as far as, you know, teaching life skills to the special ed students.
I've seen it in other schools, once they hit eighteen or they graduate, they go into the life skills program till they're twenty-one. It's generally in a different place because they are above eighteen, but, or with a kitchen where they're learning how to cook, you know, really.
We've had kitchen experiences, as a matter of fact, with special education. Rusty, can I turn this one to you? What are you, what are you seeing as far as life skills?
Life skills, it's incorporated within our building and...
That's a lot.
I, I don't know about other districts, I know Ben La Pine, it was incorporated in each building. Pine High School had a life skills program, as did Summit, Mountain View and Bend. Now they had the ability to, to have those kids full-time in the life skills program. And they started it well before they were out of high school. I mean, they, they were transitioning at the age of sixteen, to be honest with you. And so they were teaching those things, those kids took care of picking up the cafeteria, sweeping certain areas of the school. They disinfected our weight room, for instance. And so we have kids that do those kind of things, mail run, those kinds of life skills that they, they do right now. Calling, and Dylan, some of those kids are involved in that, so that transition's taken place. I think the issue here is, we don't have that as a, as a planned course statement, what we have to have according to the state. And they, they are guaranteed services, I believe, through age twenty-one.
Yeah, they are.
Says they have a classroom outside of the high school setting, do we have that?
No, we don't, that's what, that's what I was going to say.
I wonder if KCC or, I don't know, something to part with.
Well, basically, all our facilities inside our shops are, you know, the IEP students access those all the time. We've had, we've had special education students in Shaw with an aide, Mr. Smith. We provide them a lot of opportunity. Special education students are using our arts.
I know with the, the school that I work in, when the kiddos hit the eighteen marker, it kind of felt like they had graduated because they went to a different program that was outside of the school. And so it kind of gave them that independent level of, of, you know, college in a simultaneous way. This was their college program.
Any questions or discussion? No motion? Ten point two.
I move to approve the special education transition proposal.
All in favor? Thank you. Ten point three, policy EFA local wellness program.
Very rare recently, I'd say at the end of May, ODE rolled this out through, of course, through SBA. And I believe there's probably a statute passed that declared emergency, but immediately went to back. So, the price of the thing is, we had, you know, approved the policy pre-G three, so here we are. The old policy EFA, if you look at it, it's kind of your garden variety, pre-genere policy that talks about nutrition promotion, nutrition guidelines, physical education, reimbursable school meals. So employee wellness, basically that's it. And so what, the new policy, this is the one you're going to delete this evening. The new policy that you're going to adopt takes the wellness program in a completely different direction. Basically, it puts the wellness program on the, what I've got to do, I've got to put forth and develop, you know, and implement the goals of a local wellness plan, ensure compliance. And I have, as a superintendent, I have to ensure the compliance of the wellness policy. Which means I'm going to, I have to bring in stakeholders, I need to develop a full wellness plan in collaboration. Probably Janet will be a part of this, since she's, you know, oversees the cafeteria and nutrition departments. I'm going to talk to Miami Meyer and Jackie Robinson as far as the pulling piece in here, as far as this community goes. And so basically, what we're going to be charged with is writing, developing, implementation plan. And, you know, there's, there's all this stuff right there, you have to give any roles, include information about who will be responsible for what change, how much, where and when. Include specific objectives for nutrition standards for all foods and beverages available in school campuses. A lot of nutrition guidelines are currently in EFA slash AR, that's where they're spelled out. Yeah, and it has all the guideline, I could have provided EFA slash AR, sorry I did not, but anyway, nutrition permits still out yet.
So you don't have to redo this later?
No, no, basically, no, nutrition permits stands as they are. The next part, it's going to amount to, I'm going to have to identify goals and objectives. And once again, some of the wording in EFA slash AR, description of the physical education piece, the nutrition piece, and employee wellness piece, will all be the specific factors that we're going to have to write the line for this district on. The record-keeping piece, have to have this written wellness policy included in that. Document demonstrate the policy's been available in public, so on the number of runs via the website, apparel letters, community meetings, all that. Documentation of efforts to review and update local wellness policy, including indication that's involved in the update. District uses to make stakeholders aware of their ability to participate. There's the thing there, stakeholders, I see rolling this out to stakeholders probably in about three different ways. Superintendent Advisory Committee meeting, committee group, this will be something they'll take on. Site committees, and those are probably the problem they target as far as, you know, the parent stakeholders. Down to number eight, documentation demonstrating the most recent assessment on implementation of local wellness policy being available in public, and once again, I think just through our various PR venues that we currently use to, you know, beat the drum and get this out.
They want, they wanted this adopted by the thirty...
To adopt this policy, not to have a plan done.
Oh, it's the A or it's B? And I just sent it then?
Yeah, right at the main, that's it. I went to the Plush School Board meeting for, in June, and Plush hastily jumped on it.
I mean, that's not even time for us to get it in. Because this is a bit extensive, this is a lot of work.
Yeah. It says at the top, back on the first page, this is the new updated, recognized, reorganized sample policies meeting with local wellness policy. The district contracts, the EFA for reimbursable meals, this policy is required. Okay. I think I beat the annual notification of policy to death, so let's get down to the triennial progress assessments. Every three years, the committee will go back and review our wellness policy in regards to nutrition, physical activity for the kids, and the wellness policy for the staff. They have provided some template, I don't know what those assessments are going to look like, to be honest with you, they have provided some sample templates for the committee to use and to adopt to evaluate these things. So, as soon as I write this up, it has to be more than approved, you know, I'd rather I take committee and everything. It's going to be a month or two before I, you know, it's going to be a little back to board again, so. Continuing, page twenty-two. Divisions for updating the policy. District will update and modify local wellness policy based on the results of these triennial assessments, which we don't know what they're going to look like yet. And as district parameters change, community needs change, wellness goals are met. New health science information and technology merge, federal state guidance is state per issue. And I see this as state guidance and standards, state standards. You know, the PE, the mandated PE minutes that I've been talking about for months and months and months, which are for the elementary, roll off to two thousand nineteen-twenty, right, Susan? For implementation of the PE thing, sorry.
We're talking about the dress code and trying to sort that out.
Two thousand nineteen-twenty is when the PE minutes thing has to be implemented, is what I understood.
Two years, nineteen-twenty?
Nineteen-twenty.
Nineteen-twenty to follow nineteen-twenty.
It's a long time ago.
Yeah, so.
No, not nineteen-twenty.
As we brainstorm and figure out a way to implement those new PE minutes that are fired by the state legislature, this will be a part of the assembly merge, and this will also emerge in the local wellness policy. Community outreach and communications, once again, kind of deep centering communication quite a bit in here. So unless you have questions, I'll pass by you. PE minutes, you know, state got it, reprieved, not have mail-in information. Yeah, they gave us reprieve laws, so. How much time did you give us? Two thousand nineteen-twenty.
Shouldn't that be reflected in the policy that you adopt? Because what this says is you're going to require...
I don't, I think maybe, probably not, I don't think the governor is sliding that stuff, so that's probably why it, why we're not... Or I feel completely micromanaged by this document.
Well, join the club.
I'm going to have to give the guys a little more time to get together. I'm doing assessment piece and all that stuff.
Yeah. That's why we wanted to take one thing out of there that you didn't have to do, which is the PE.
Well, believe it or not, the original one that they sent out, I took quite a little stuff out. I think you should pay out my, that's very, a lot of the things, so. Then I saw it's not being, you know, having a need here. Okay, nutrition, I think EFA AR spells that out, school meals, once again, EFA AR takes care of that. Staff qualification for our cooks, training and everything else, we do a good job on that, thanks to Janet. And good work those cooks do. The water thing, the one thing they don't mention in there that I, frankly, maybe I don't, it doesn't need to be mentioned because we do the lead testing, lead-free water thing. So basically, we assure, you see a free, safe, we're safe. We, you know, now have, you know, verbiage regarding to safe water, and a free water and so on, that I brought this in for you.
Are we serving nutrients sometimes?
Pardon me?
Are we serving nutrients sometimes?
No, we don't, we don't serve water, but, um... Says it'll be on flavor. Competitive food and beverage, one of the lengthy high school break is where you have competitive food and beverages during the high school break. That's the stuff, it's not a part of the regular book school. Celebrations and rewards, loyalty, this was a tough one. I put encourage to meet, being the former principal at ADK, and seen all those numerous cupcakes that were on a daily basis at birthday parties. I'm not going to be the bridge that's still cupcakes away from, you know, the elementary birthday parties. Basically, that gives us that latitude as far as, you know, what you would, what you basically would say about the high nutrition training. So, there you have that. The fundraising piece, that's in regard, you know, people do, retail, pie things, they do Caesar's pizza things. This refers to everything outside school day. Can't sell us things during school time, that's what I'm saying. We can't change it, because we encourage to meet.
What about Easter bunnies?
You know, that's a good, that's a good point, we do, can you sell that?
Well, in the, yeah, DMS, ASB sells those sodas.
Oh, yeah, there's sodas.
I don't know, I'm going to have to probably think of those.
I think you'd have encouraged them, but not required them.
Yeah, I think encourage is fine.
On the fundraising one?
Yeah.
Yeah, because our, our concession standers.
The pretzels were...
That concession stand...
Beats and exceeds. I think there are a bunch where they sell it for. Another thing too, you have the drink machines in the cafeteria, you know, so. Rusty, what's the drink machines in the cafeteria?
It has like Gatorades and, and waters and stuff, but it doesn't have soda.
It says during the school day, not during the concession time, I just have some school.
Italian sodas at lunchtime. Other than Chinese soda.
What that's...
What soda they're sold.
ASB soda.
Italian sodas.
But isn't this stuff covered in that, the other?
EFA, uh, all the...
All the...
Doors, yeah.
The half inch of policies surrounding...
It's in there, believe me, what's A is in there.
I wonder if we just forgot that.
E F A, B F A.
If you were just referring to that, you could.
So the, the part that has fundraising despite no will, is it does affect, D M S does an Italian soda sale?
That's what I was.
We're going to change the wording of that?
Encourage?
Yeah, I'll be happy to change the wording.
Good.
How about encourage?
Well, we want to still sell cookie dough still.
Usually you do that after hours though.
It just says during the school day.
Tell that to our teachers.
Yeah.
They're not going to hit up after hours to get through.
I don't know what to think about it. She says she's a baseball, so.
So is that being candy bars, looking at it out for A R votes? I mean, there's a, there's a amount of candy that goes out. Desk treats, hamburgers.
Well, I think the celebrations reward that.
Yeah.
I, you know, these, I don't know, I, USDA and Oregon smart snap standards. I mean, if you really were to read through those, we might be all right. I'm a part French, well, sorry. I don't want to take with birthday cupcakes, but sometimes, you know, but.
I guess my answer to all this is, it's made the call, put the policy through, I'll do some research on it. I need to make some amendments, I'll go through O S B A and bring it back. And I'll discuss some of our fundraising things with my administrative staff, too, as it relates to his.
There's no cookies or chocolate.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that cake is.
Yeah, that carrot cake doesn't meet any standard.
I don't want to get into cake school.
Pretty sure this is U of A.
So how's that, so this has to be approved by July, but you. And what happens if the. Well, basically, I get a hold of O S B A, I get a hold of O D E, and I ask for, uh, an extension as far as approving it. And that, that's all.
And our school lunch program goes through O D A, USDA through O D A.
This is, this is very humorous.
Physical activity, physical education, I kind of think, no, no hard to, that's pretty much everything. As this, there's a statement in there, refusing recesses, punishment, I can remove that because there are times when students are behind, Susan knows this, we keep them in for recess to catch up. Also, there's some necessary things to do.
Or they have a doctor's note and they haven't been feeling well, they stay in to get caught up, whether, or they just stay in because of the inclement weather, or, for whatever reason. Sometimes they're struggling and they're just having a bad day because there's something going on outside of school and they need to hang out with them instead of.
This is where mandates by policy that we're going to teach those minutes. This puts me, because if it's in policy and we're not doing it, why put it in policy?
In what part?
The P E.
The minutes. Because I, the minutes.
P E minutes.
This, this policy that we're adopting here.
Well, you have my packets, so I do have.
Some people come prepared. Some steal it.
And this is adopted until nineteen twenty, right? The P E minutes from nineteen twenty.
Shouldn't it say that in here?
I'm still hoping that we're going to have a pushback.
I think on the P E minutes, as we find out, it must be, that's why I'm getting the P E.
We're okay staff wise, we're just struggling facility wise to be prepared for that. And, and it's going to be very large classes and safety issues, but we're going to have to do what we're going to do. We may turn one of our rooms into a gill room, kind of thing, I'm, I'm not joking, I mean, to accommodate that kind of stuff.
Twenty-four employee wellness, I think we're doing well on that. I'm not going to put a brand name on this, as far as it goes. Other activities of student wellness, athletics, that is a piece of this. And also very generic sentence there, so it's a, it's a lot of wrong. So my recommendation is, is to ask the board to see this evening. And I've taken notes of what you, you know, question. I'll meet with these guys, I'll meet, there's some amendments that I can put forward and run through O S B A.
I will refer to these three, but I would not be told I'm part Spanish.
You feel that's easy as play to. I feel that's easiest way to do it, you know, what we do. So for the P E minutes, what's in here reflects a state law, right? Well, it hasn't, it hasn't, it still hasn't gone through the governor yet. It's still a work of progress that's going to be added later on, as far as. The specific P E minutes. Well, I see a sub, you know, very bottom, that refers at that. This bottom, and the brackets remain around this language in the sample policy, E F A in anticipation of a potential two-year delay from the requirement, the depending legislation, the permanent legislative session. So let's throw a policy together before we. Cast the law.
There's been a policy on the books for almost ten years. Is that right, Will?
It's a ten year.
There's been a, a policy, a law on the books for almost ten years.
Yeah, it's been law for ten years.
The delay is what's.
They gave a ten year implementation time, yeah.
The pushback and the delay is what's being thrown up now.
It was passed in two thousand seventeen, ten year implementation, where everybody, I think the state kind of fell asleep. But we all, all the school districts, everybody, and all of a sudden, surprise, it's two thousand seventeen. And everybody, you know, agrees, yes, wasn't this thing my business? Are we going to space, are we going to staff?
Given that this is about nutritional standard, the sugar code, I think it's.
It is, it is the United States of America.
I think it's interesting, and it's, you don't take up too much of your time, you have other better things to.
I would agree with that.
Well, your kids won't get any art.
Are they really going to drive to Lakeview and check out our cupcakes?
That's the sad part about it, is that in, in our instructional day, because this affects case six the most right now, if there won't be any time for music or art or anything else, and our instructional time, or even the math, we could come back.
That was a recurring theme of the Salem too, is the loss, the potential loss of the arts, the potential loss of music. Even in case of the potential loss of C T.
I mean, if they're worried about that.
I watched a hearing when he was speaking to. He was representing this. And he is testimony, and he was very determined and, but he was cranky about that. But this is for a reason, he didn't want to use takers past. That's the story, but that's basically how he presented his argument.
Do the yokel ball shares count?
He didn't have much sympathy for anyone else, personally.
Do the yokel ball shares count?
No, don't count.
Not that I know of, no.
Recession does not count.
I knew recess.
So what did you tell those that we don't approve this? What I'm going to have to do, I'm going to have to get hold of O D E and get a waiver, affects our school lunch program. Right, puts us in a red flag. Puts us in red flag mode, and, uh, like I said, my strong recommendation is to approve it. And then I'm working through with O S B A and whatever other dignitaries in Salem, I'm talking to. Paying, this needs your concern this evening, go through and see if I can modify those amendments, and then bring it back. Thank you, and for. That's my recommendation. But yes, it is due. So I'll make the motion, I move to approve the deletion of the current policy, E F A, local wellness program and adoption of version two.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, board.
Art program additions.
Should I, is it going to take that one on?
Sure.
Yeah, since Jesse isn't here.
Yeah, apparently we're adding some art. What, what these are, are, uh, courses that we may add, it doesn't mean that we will. But we will have them in the course catalog, so students, when they do their forecasting, can choose those. And if enough students choose those, that's what sections we will offer. Unfortunately, they left out the, the one area of art I'm best at, there is no stick figure drawing, as you can tell. So, and, and I think this, this reflects more of our art teacher's strengths and, and what he brings to the table to be able to teach, so. Those are, you can, you can read those there, I think I need to go through them for you.
Now, I wanted to express my thanks to him too, because this is very ambitious and.
Yeah, having, having gone in his classroom this year, uh, my, my vision of what art is, 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 has been expanded greatly. Watching that, when there were kids that, they could use one tool to develop paintings, and they were able to do that. And they were not stick people, they were actually really painting, so I was pretty impressed with some of the things that go on in that classroom.
What's the minimum class size?
I don't think there is a minimum, it just depends on, on what it's up against and how that fits. Because we have, we have regular classes of English sometimes that, because of conflicts, are down to six, seven kids. Or social studies and other classes of, of the same section, they're twenty-five, thirty. Hopefully this year we do a better job of balancing that, because that's, that's really hard on the teacher to go from, I don't have enough desks to, my, my discussion took two minutes and the other class it took forty-five minutes in the same lesson plan, so. I don't think there's a minimum class size, whether there's enough there to really say we can offer it. And I think for some of these, you could possibly combine two of these into one, one period two, and offer two at most times at once.
Any other questions? Or motion?
I need to approve the art program addition, as presented.
All in favor? Consent it.
I need to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor? Announcements?
Well, uh, next meeting, our goals and responsibilities, starting off, three P M, Steve Kelly, which is the district seven board of directors. Three thirty to six thirty is the full presentation. I am still waiting to see the word from the other school boards in the Southland County meeting. Much like there is the, there should be some of them, some of those folks joined us, haven't been much yet. But I'm sure we'd like to have again if they will join us. Six thirty, dinner, seven o'clock, we're giving a regular session, first swearing in of the four, the four board members. And then, uh, we're going to keep it to be a relatively short, uh, meeting, uh, with just, we'll discuss it down in the third table. At the high points then. Next one, in celebration of the Fourth of July holiday, the district office will be closed on Monday, July third and Tuesday, July fourth, or Monday, July third, we're all using our vacation leave, annual leave, or whatever. So we were all going to be gone, so, uh, it's going to be tough to keep the place open on Monday, July third, so it will be closed that day. Usually every year I give the six or four quarters, far as summer hours, the summer days are on. This summer, we're going five days a week, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, the fourth day, so. So, four to the weeks, or anything like that. And, uh, the last thing I will put's not on here that I will say for the record, for the camera, whatever it is. Tonight is the last meeting for distinguished board members, Pete and Shere, and Stephanie and Barry. Pete has been with this board since two thousand nine, Stephanie has been with the board since two thousand twelve. I thank you for your years of dedicated service. At times of gratification, at times of frustration, but you've soldier gone through and, uh, you've done great things for this district. And speaking of the district, and the staff, and folks in this community, you know, helped me on a job very well, so thank you for your service.
Uh, next board meeting agenda, I don't.
Swearing in of the board members, elect chairperson, elect vice chairperson, including two thousand seventeen, eighteen board calendar. And then we'll probably have an exactly the same session regarding our earlier and future session topics. There may be some, my unique thing, I would send agenda to the relations and the partners. So, maybe that's a, our main, but you, you cannot accept you. Negotiations, so also that. Not yet, not until we're all signed. I'll take the last one. Thank you, Pete.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are adjourned.
Once again, we have cake, so. More time to say.
I have my cake and I ate it.
So, take some cake home. Whatever.